I'll call this regular council meeting of the village Graham and Anne to order. It's July eighth at seven thirty P M. With us for prayer this evening is Shaylin from the Lighthouse Church.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Dear Lord, I just want to thank you for such a beautiful day. And I just want to kind of been on my heart all day how thankful I am to call Graham and Anne my home and to have grown up on such a beautiful island unlike any other. So, Lord, I'm very thankful for Graham and Anne and growing up here. And, Lord, I'm very thankful for the people seated in front of me, Lord. These people that have taken time out of their own busy schedules to be in these leadership positions and looking after Graham and Anne so well. And, Lord, I just want to pray for them as they meet this evening to talk about important stuff, as they meet in the future and stuff to talk about everything that's happening on Graham and Anne, Lord. Would you just guide them and lead them as they're making tough decisions, as they're having difficult conversations, as there's big things happening, big projects, Lord? I just pray that your hand is guiding them and you're walking alongside them as they go. Lord, I just pray for the people of Graham and Anne. You know the stories, you know the people, Lord. So, I just pray that you're with them. Lord, you give them peace where needed, you lift them up when needed. Lord, if there's fear, if there's worry, if there's stress, Lord, that you're there with them. Lord, so just bless Graham and Anne, bless this council, and we just pray over this meeting. We pray this all in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things tonight for opening remarks. I was honored on Saturday. I attended the grand opening of the nature preserve on Ross's Island. We weren't actually on Ross's Island, but we looked at it from the thoroughfare. The Nature Trust in New Brunswick has acquired the island. This was a huge fundraising acquisition for them. It's one of the biggest projects they've taken on. It will still allow public access to Ross's Island. People can still go there, walk and do the things that they have in the past. But I think to preserve the island and to continue to have that public access is a really important thing for the community. So, I just wanted to say congratulations to them. And the other thing is, I think we all need to say a huge thank you to the volunteers and to our staff who organized Canada Day for us a week ago. There's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that we don't always see and a lot of hours that aren't necessarily taking place on the day of or taking place behind the scenes day of. So, thank you to everybody who helped out and participated in Canada Day. And I have a little bit of a bias, but I think we have one of the best candidate celebrations around. With that, we will move on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing done, I will move to adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June third. You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question?
Madam Mayor, under Old Business Community Center Generator, it says moved by Counselor Wayne Green. You got promoted, buddy. What can I say? That's just a typo.
So, are we okay with the minutes with the change noted? Anything else? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. I have three invoices, two under the General Operating Fund. One is for fundi fencing for a dugout fence and fence repairs. It's for thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. And one for J I L engineering for playground equipment. That's also the General Operating Fund. And that is for twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. The third one is from the General Capital Fund, and that's Michael Green Electric for the splash pad. And that's for fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. There's also a suggestion to add in closed session under financial, the pavilion build and the cost for that, if we can... The pavilion, the new pavilion that's out here? So, you heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. We have no R C and P here this evening, so we'll move along to the next agenda item, which is the Regional Service Commission. And there's just a couple of things that I wanted to give a quick update on just because I try to do this every so often. The first thing is that we're starting the general budgeting process for 2025, which seems incredible that we're starting at this. But it has to be out for public consultation for forty-five days. So, it has to be approved by the end of August first of September. And the R S E is actually going to have the Committee of the Whole meeting here this week. So, I'm pleased that they're going to come over here just to see some of the opportunities and challenges of traveling to and from Graham and Anne. So, I think that that's a positive step. The other thing, two things that came up sort of in general conversation that are just things that were flagging there, so I wanted to flag here as well just for people to keep an eye on, is there was an announcement earlier this year that the province is funding a provincial dispatch program for the volunteer car ride platforms like Charlotte Dial Ride. It will be mandatory, and it seems to have some sort of tie to some of the money that the Regional Service Commission gets from inclu-, what's the name of that? E S A, Economic and Social Inclusion. That money that the R S E gets goes directly to Dial Ride to offset some of their funds. And Dial Ride already has a system that works, and they're worried about moving over to this new system, particularly not knowing what the ongoing operating costs will be. So, there's a lot of discussion about what that funding is going to mean, whether that's going to be able to continue. So, that's on our radar for that. And the other thing is, there is a rumor that the province is cutting the operational funding to all the search and rescue groups across the province, which means that they will now be responsible for fundraising for the search and rescue and could impact some of their operational costs. So, those are just a couple of the things that we're kind of flagging and monitoring to see what's going to happen with them. But they're both a little concerning, given some of the volunteer groups that we have in the area and some of the programs that are operating well. So, questions or comments? Counselor Sturgeon?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We kind of touched on this at a Zone Four meeting in particular about the cutting to the search and rescue. Madam Mayor, you're probably aware, there was a... I was up in Dogtown area today, and there was a ten-year-old boy that disappeared for, you know, basically for close to twenty-four hours. And it was amazing to watch, you know, professionals and volunteers work together for thankfully, a success story here. And if I may say so, just to give a little pat on the back to our corporate neighbors, I was told by somebody at a restaurant afterwards that Irving provided their chopper, and that was the reason why they found him. And, you know, it's a system that everybody's very dedicated, and when the chips are down, everybody chips in. So, and from what I understand from the Zone Four meeting, there's not a heck of a lot of money being given by the province. So, why even cut it? Why even go there? So, hopefully, that's just a vicious rumor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to nine-two, inclement weather policy. So, on June the twenty-fifth, the C A O, the Highway Supervisor, and I had a call with the district, what is our school district? Superintendent, it was his staff. And let's just say, I felt bathed in the warm glow of their willingness to work collaboratively with us on inclement weather days. And you can read as much sarcasm into that as you want to, because that's exactly how I felt about it. There was not, they basically, short of blowing us off, blew us off. It's the only way I can describe that, and I can't even come up with a politically correct way to say it. They really didn't want to hear from us. We could call if we wanted, but they didn't really want us to. And it was, I have to say, a very disappointing call that we had with them. They, I don't think that they wanted to acknowledge that there was different weather on Graham and Anne and that there were some mistakes made this past winter. And so, it was, I don't have a good feeling or a good... I don't think we're going to see significant changes from their level going forward. So, I think it makes more sense, we can follow up with the department again if we want. But I think proactively, we just need to make sure that we have a system in place here that if the roads are a concern, we put out a voidant early in the morning so people can make their decisions about what they're going to do, particularly if school is not canceled on that day. I think that from our point of view, that's probably our best course of action going forward, and then we can go from there. So, I don't know if the C A O or anyone wants to add to that, but...
Madam Mayor, nobody wants to make this a political issue. But it is an election year, and very soonly, there will be candidates. So, I think it would be good for us to reach out to both candidates and tell them our concerns and make it fresh, I guess.
And I think it would be good for people, individuals in the public as well, who are meeting with the candidates to express those concerns as well. I know Counselor Layton, did you want to add anything to that or? Any other questions or comments? Okay. Nine-three, dark harbor wharf repairs. Treasure Calder is going to speak.
After we met last time and Jordy talked about getting Dutchman to fix the wharf, and that was approved, I just reached out to the Parks Canada who pay for the O let to be done. And we talked with Bill, it was a few thousand dollars less. And they said they would pay for the whole wharf repair out there because they're the ones that use it. So, we're off the hook for that. Yeah, so Dutchman's going to fix it, and they're going to pay for the whole thing. So, just a little update on that. And I spoke to Jordy. I called Dutchman to tell them to go ahead, but they haven't yet. But have they since? So, he was just going to make sure that they got the message, and they're probably just busy.
It's always good to have a good news story. Thanks. Questions or comments on that? All right, moving right along, ten-minute open session. Not seeing anyone springing up for the podium. We will move on to petitions or written submissions. And there's a letter that should have been in your package from Corporal Stewart. And he asked for me to share this with the group. Dear Madam Mayor, Graham and Anne Village Councilors and Staff, I wanted to express my gratitude for all the support you have shown me and the rest of the detachment members during my time here on Graham and Anne. You have stood by us and encouraged the public to show their support and to work together with us as we serve the community here. I know you will continue to do this for the next group of officers here, and for that, I thank you. Thank you also outside of my role as police officer for the way that you serve the public and strive for excellence. It is evidence that you continue to work towards improving this island for its residents and for the people who visit. You are part of making this a great place to live, and my family and I have been happy to call this home. I know we'll be back and hope to see you all again. Corporal Stewart. I know we all enjoyed our working relationship with him. And while we had a few bumps occasionally along the road, I think it was overall a really good relationship. And I think that, you know, we've been very fortunate with a lot of the members that we've had here locally. So, thank him for the letter, for sure. We are moving right along tonight. Applications for donation from Graham and Anne Minor Baseball, open for discussion. And those were all in the package as well. Questions or comments? Counselor Green?
Were these, these applications for funding, did they go to the Rec Committee for recommendation? Do we still have an active Rec Committee?
I don't think the Rec Committee's had a meeting for a little bit, but we can do that if you wish.
No, just we have, you know, our bylaws says we're supposed, they're supposed to have a chance to give us input on these things. I mean, I don't think anyone will find any objection to any of these personally. I'd be willing to move, we approve these requests for funding for the various minor baseball groups that are looking for them.
So, you heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Sturgeon. Question? Counselor Turner?
I do find it disappointing that there's no funds raised on any of them to date because that's one of the reasons we put that on our application was to see, you know, what efforts are being made on their part. So, I won't, you know, I'm not disputing paying the donations, but it's always nice when you see that in this case, maybe the kids, you know, or even if you had a fifty-fifty, the one that's for, you know, three hundred dollars total need, you'd think could take care of that. So, it's just something that kind of stood out to me is that all of them had no fundraising so far.
Anyone else? Counselor Toll?
With Jane and the fact that they could say at least that they've raised something and then come to us and say, "We'd like the rest." If they make the effort, I'd like to see them do something before they come and ask for money. Even if it's just one person that's giving them the rest of the money, it's still, they did it. That's my feeling.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. I do wonder at some point if we should look at our donation system again. We've been at two hundred dollars max for as long as I can remember. It might be worth looking at that, and maybe we need to have different levels of funding, whether it's for groups, individual, that sort of thing. So, maybe that's something we can flag going forward into the budget year, just a conversation about that in general. Because I do, I remember Counselor Turner, to your point, that is why we've had that on there is to make sure we were not the first stop, but maybe a partner, something along those lines. So, okay. Fourteen-two, roadside ditches, mowing and maintenance. Counselor Boyd to speak.
All right, we'll try this. If nobody's hearing or we're lagging too much, just let me know. Anyways, it's that time of year where all the leafy trees are blooming, the grass is growing up the other side of the highway. So, I had a conversation with our Highway Supervisor a few weeks ago, and the person that used to contract the D O T to do it no longer has the gear to do that. So, I guess it's time for us to look into what we're going to do there. Because obviously, it needs to be done. Is it something that we can find another contractor to come do? Is it maybe we can get some of D T I's gear from the mainland for a few weeks to come do? Anyways, I did discuss with the Highway Supervisor, and he does have a few ideas. So, if Counselor Layton wants to speak on that, I'll refer to him.
Thanks, Counselor Dan. Yeah, so like Dan was saying, we're in a position where we can't really maintain our highways to mow them like D T I did in the past. I would like to see us ultimately own our own piece of equipment to address that issue. We just, two years ago, we just spent a lot of money doing our ditching and doing the tree trimming on our mistakenly designated highways. Well, two years in, and it's up to six feet high. And we need to really address it this year, or we're going to be back with a great big contract again. You know, it'd be nice to maintain it every year, cut it a couple of times a year. But I don't know if we have any money to actually buy a piece of equipment. Probably we don't. But I don't think there's any options to get anything from D T I because we're kind of a standalone. We've got to manage this on our own. So, I guess our only option is either buy a piece of equipment, an attachment that we could possibly rent a tractor to put on. We could rent a tractor every year and keep the attachment that we'd own and use that every year. Or we could just rent a tractor, rent the attachment. But I hate to throw good money after bad. It'd be nice to own your own piece of equipment and use it when you want to. So, I don't know what we do, but the previous contractor is not positioned to do it this year. And now, we've found ourselves in a bit of a bind, and I don't know how to move forward. If anybody has any suggestions, that would be great, but...
Just wondering if there's a contractor like on the mainland that can come and do it. I mean, just because they're not local doesn't mean there's not someone available.
Madam Mayor, I was kind of thinking myself, maybe this is something that maybe Counselor Layton may want to do. The council's asking him or staff to see what exactly we need and how much it would cost us so we could make an informed decision in the future.
Barry Gilmore from La Pro used to come over and do them before they went local. I don't know if he's still in the business or not, or who else there is. But until we've determined we're going to be in this more than two years, it probably doesn't make, you know, not the best business case to be buying. You know, if we could lease something or whatever, yeah. But I think there's probably a contractor around or two that might do that for the short term.
My suggestion would be that we rent the equipment and our boys do the job. I mean, we can do a better job. We can do it, be more attentive, do a lot more than a contractor just comes in and clips the side of the road. I'd like to see the four-slope mode, maybe even the back slope. But, I mean, to hire that out, put it out for a contract, I don't know where that would look, what that would look like and when we could actually pull it off. But we could, I think we could go rent the equipment now. Maybe I'll get some prices together for that. And maybe we'll have a special meeting or something for the months up and discuss it further. But I'll look into it. I'll look at, I'm not familiar with the Gilmore guy that you... But maybe I'll reach out to him and see what kind of opportunities.
Counselor Sturgeon?
Madam Mayor, I very much appreciate Counselor Layton's input in this. And my only concern about having our own people do it, and I have supreme confidence in their staff, but safety, I mean, you know, I hate for anything to happen if somebody got hurt, I guess. I'm not sure what's all involved here, but that's what comes my mind.
That's true. That's on everybody's mind all the time, but that's what we do. We work on the side of the road. That's the gig, so, I mean...
I just have concerns about the machinery toppling into the ditch, I guess, or anything like that, I guess, so...
Yep, risks to everything, I guess, but...
I'd like to think that if they're capable of operating backhoes and high hoes and plow trucks, they could probably figure out how to, but I'm not sure that grass is on the road, I would think.
Anyone else? Okay, so I understand we're going to get some options about either renting and/or a potential semi-local, not maybe island, but in the area contractor to see what some of that might look like. And we'll try to regroup, either a special meeting, Committee of the Whole will do something hopefully before our next regular meeting in August. So, is that a fair assessment of where we are? Okay. Fourteen-three, Green Initiative Standing Committee information. Counselor Trish Toll to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if you've seen the picture in your package here. It was the day that we decided to plant ninety trees around the skateboard park. I had someone back in May from Trees for Canada to get me ahold of me by email and ask me if I would be interested in putting something like this together. And I remember when we first moved here, the scouts were doing this. Every now and then, they were putting out trees. So, I thought, oh, it might be a good chance to have some fun. So, I got in touch with the principal over at the school, and they in turn got in touch with Paige Linton, who contacted me at work one day. And we met up, and we talked about what we were looking for. And she was all about the green environment and doing things, putting things back into the, into the, the good stuff into the air. And she also got ahold of Carla Ward, and her grade eight students were involved. So, it was the grade seven class and the grade eight class decided that they would do this. The teachers got the kids to put, they did a whole session on what it meant, what trees meant, what they did for us, why we planted them, why we should look after them. And the grade eight class also was learning a little bit about municipal politics. So, I asked our mayor if she would graciously join me and maybe give them a little chat about what it was like to work here or operate out of here and what we did, which they thoroughly enjoyed. So, then I had everything pretty much under control, and then I tried to find some trees. And that became a little bit of a search, for sure. Nobody had, little saplings was what we were looking for, just six inches high or eight inches high. Nobody had any. I couldn't order any through anybody. Trees for Canada had no idea where to get them, which I thought was kind of, you know, that they were putting this all together, but they couldn't recommend or get you any trees. So, I just happened to be scrolling on Facebook, which I do way too much, and J D Irving was having a once-in-a-while sale at their Sussex Farm, where they grow all the trees that they plant. And I guess they had planted more than they were going to need, so they were having like a twenty-four-hour sale. I contacted them. They wouldn't save them for you. They wouldn't let you prepay for them. They wouldn't send them to you. You had to go get them, so, which I'll use any excuse to go away. So, we went away for the weekend. And we went up to Irving at, I think we got there between seven-thirty and eight o'clock in the morning, and they were all already lined up out the door. They had thousands of trees up there. It was ama-, I wish I'd had more money with me. I would have come home with a lot of trees. So, we waited about an hour to get through the lineup, and we got up to the cash, and I found out it was cash only. So, my husband actually had some money on him, which I never carry cash. And the fellow in front of us offered to give me the money to pay for them, which I didn't need to use his money, but I thought that was pretty nice of him. So, we got a hundred trees for fifty dollars, fifty cents a piece for these little trees. I kept ten for myself, brought them home. We put them in some water, saved them, made them, you know, they lasted the two weeks until we got together. And on Tuesday, June the eleventh, forty-four students, two teachers, and one counselor and the mayor of Graham and Anne had a great morning planting trees, having snacks, talking about municipal government. Then we all, we went, the school, the classes went to the back, and they had their lunch, and they played with some of the sports equipment that was here, and they made a nice day of it. I think the kids had a really good time. There's a picture in here that shows you some of the things that we did. You can go on to the Community School Council page on Instagram, and they have lots of pictures. There's lots, I think, on our site as well. So, I want to send out a huge thanks to the teachers and students, to the teachers for getting this all done. They also, I forgot about this, sorry. When we came in after planting, they had done up posters. Each student had done a poster of what they had learned about trees and what they do to the environment. And they had them laying out on the tables here. And we discussed what they had learned with them and talked about things. And we have one hanging out on our bulletin board, I noticed, out here. And I think there's another one somewhere, and they're probably also on our Facebook page. So, I think it was a great time, and I would certainly, you know, do it again. And that's about it. So, we're all good to go. We've got ninety trees out there lining two sides of the skateboard park. They're still alive. I went and checked.
They're marked with little red tape. So, that's it. We're done. Any questions or comments? I will say it was a nice Tuesday morning to be over here, and they were really a good group of kids. I think that close to the end of school, it can be a little exciting to be off property, but they were very well behaved, and they were, it was really, it was a fun morning hanging out with them. So, I was really glad to be able to take part. Okay, so we're moving right along to approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. We have Dutchman Contracting, Miller's Pond Road, for six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. Dutchman Contracting for Deep Cove Road, three thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Dutchman Contracting for the Backhoe Broom, six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Dutchman Contracting for the Splash Pad, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Hub Concrete Pumping Splash Pad for three thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Saunders Equipment Limited for the Sam Boney Repair for one thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Silk Stevens for the Fitness Center Expansion, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Sullivan Sales and Service for the Ford F-550, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and nine cents. Drive Products for D T I Tailgate Assembly, one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Fundi fencing for the dugout and fence repairs, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. And J I L engineering for the playground equipment, twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second or? You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. And just a note there as well, we had previously approved an invoice for Go-Go Gymnastics, and the bill came in lower than what we had approved. So it was for thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, so. From the General Capital Fund, for Sanson Equipment for the generator, it's a twenty-five percent down payment for twenty thousand and eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. And for Michael Green Electric for the Splash Pad, for fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Item eighteen-one is a motion to transfer seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents from the Capital Reserve Fund to the Capital Fund. You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. I have real fear that I'm going to start reversing numbers when I'm reading those off, when there's a list like that. Item number nineteen is closed session. We have two items. Number one is property for doctor housing, and number two is financial for the pavilion construction. Motion to go to closed session? Heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Recall this meeting to order. We've been in closed session to talk about two items. The first was property doctor housing, and we are going to follow up for some more information and bring this back at a subsequent meeting. The second was financial for the market pavilion, and I think we have two motions coming of, out of that discussion. Counselor Sturgeon?
Madam Mayor, I will move that we pay Urquhart Quality Homes thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
From the?
From the...
General...
General Operating Fund. General Capital Fund, sorry. Thank you.
So you heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to transfer twenty thousand from the General Operating Fund to the, uh, General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. We're also going to try to sit down with the Market Committee and talk about future operating options, so we'll have that on our list to do for some time, hopefully this month coming up. Our next regular council meeting is here on August twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at seven-thirty P M.
Madam Ma-, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Thank you, everybody, and good night.